Today is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Pastor Lyles with Willow Hills Baptist Church, who will lead us in the invocation. And then following that, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day and a beautiful place to be. Thank you, Lord, for living in Prescott. We give you thanks for all of us finding this place here. Father, we do pray for these new members of the city council. Give them wisdom, insight. Thank you, Lord, for those who have served for some time, who have years of experience in this, Lord. We just thank you that collectively, Lord, you'll do a great job of passing the baton on and continuing the growth and the welfare of this city. And we thank you, Lord, for a time we can come and just be silent for a moment. And thank you for your guidance and your leadership in all that you do. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that vocal?
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr. Mayor Protem Orr.
Sorry, you had it on mute. I'm here. Thank you.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present. Mayor Protem Orr is on the phone.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I have a couple announcements as we get started. One is if you'd like to speak during our public comment, we do have these speaker request forms that are on the table back there. And if you can get those to the deputy city clerk, we'll make sure that you get your time during those public comments. Keep in mind that we're trying to do, well, we're going to look at this today. I was going to say three minutes. It'll be five minutes until we change the rules. But also just make sure those comments are directed to the council and not to staff or anybody else, but it's for us here on the council. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mark Woodfield, and he has a PSPRS update.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we've been talking about PSPRS evaluations coming out in November, and they've been delayed and delayed this year. But talking to PSPRS, and they've come out with the preliminary numbers, the final individual valuation should be available on their website for all the public later this week, is what they're telling me. But they have been able to verify that those preliminary evaluations that they gave us do include all the factors that are kind of unique to Prescott, including that state assistance. I just want to go over some significant facts. The last two actuarial cycles, we've had some very significant things that have impacted the valuation. We had the significant legislation and the reform that is significant. It is meaningful to PSPRS moving forward. It will have an impact on the liability as we move forward. We had the Parker Hall lawsuit of resolve this year. That is also big and impactful on the valuation in the last two years. They replaced the PBI with the CPI based on COLA, a CPI-based COLA, which is definitely a big improvement, a big fix to the system. They also this year updated mortality tables. We had a wage inflation factor that adjusted from four to three and a half percent per year. And of course, assumed journey rates is constantly being discussed, are constantly being adjusted down. Those have impacts. Every year, you have impacts in your actuarial evaluations. They're usually small ones, but the last two years, we've had relatively significant changes. And we've talked about those and the expected increases. So enough precursor. Let's look at the numbers that we have from them. As of June 30, the two, our two trusts are 30% funded. That's an unfunded liability of $86.4 million. You know, that's higher, obviously, than last year. We knew it was going to be higher, just in general, because of the cycle of the improvements that was expected to go up until 2020 on the other cycle. And then adding those other factors, those other changes pushed it a little bit more. The 30% funded, that's close to what it was actually last year, actually. It was 31%. So this funding percentage dropped, but not a huge amount. These numbers do not include the $11.6 million additional payment that we sent in September. So that definitely, you're going to see a reduction next year as we get into that. Another, I think, important factor in the preliminary numbers that we've seen, our employer rate, our contribution rates actually stayed the same from fiscal '18 to fiscal '19. That's an indication that, you know, a lot of these changes were part of the original actuarial adjustments, as well as some other actuarial factors that have factored into that. And of course, with the passage by the citizens and all the hard work of the committee of Prop 443, you know, in the future, the unfunded liability is definitely going to be going down. This is going to be your high point for your unfunded liability. You're going to see that reducing significantly over the next few years. So just wanted to get that information out and let everybody know. They should be able to get on the PSPRS.com website and see individual fund valuations, hopefully by the end of the week, is what I hear from PSPRS.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Thanks for that update.
Sure.
All right. Proclamations?
Supporting the Arizona Education Progress Meter.
Proclamation, supporting the Arizona Education Progress Meter, December 19th, 2017. Whereas the city of Prescott recognizes that we have to make education a top priority in our community to ensure a strong economic future and a higher quality of life for everyone. And whereas the city of Prescott understands that our future economy and workforce demands will require more than a high school diploma and only 42% of Arizona adults currently possess a degree, certificate, or industry credential. And whereas the city of Prescott recognizes the need to improve educational attainment across the state and in our local community and supports the statewide attainment goal of 60% by 2030. Now therefore, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott of Arizona, does hereby affirm that we are committed to achieving the statewide attainment goal of 60% by 2030 and recognizes that the Arizona Education Progress Meter has a tool to make progress toward that attainment goal. Furthermore, the city of Prescott affirms that we are a world-class education partner with Expect More Arizona and will heretofore work together to advance this shared vision for education. Congratulations. And I'd just like to thank Joe Howard and Marty Reed for joining us today and say, you know, there's that saying that we have to pull ourselves up by our bootstraps. And I once heard that we do have to pull ourselves up by our bootstraps, but education is the bootstraps by which we pull ourselves up. So committing to education here in Arizona and Prescott in particular is incredibly important to our community. And so I thank you for your dedication, and it's about time that our state makes education a priority. And I personally have benefited from our dedicated community of educators here in the city of Prescott. And so I thank you all for your dedication to the young folks of Prescott and Arizona. So thank you. You're welcome. Oh, John Heine, what's up?
Pressure's on. Pressure's on, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard and Ms. Reed for being here today from the district. Appreciate the partnership we have with the district. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. You know, if Alexa is a sample of the success rate of the Prescott Unified School District, we have all benefited.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. All right. Presentations?
Item A, Fire Employee of the Year, Captain Dan Baumann.
Mayor Mangarelli.
He sleeps with it under his bed.
Well, first off, last year, we started with the Fire Employee of the Year with our inaugural effort, and we recognized Conrad Jackson. Today, we're here to recognize Dan Baumann, who was this year's selectee. Unlike last year, where it was somewhat of a unilateral decision coming from the top, this year, it was through submissions through our own employee base that selected Dan. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Mangarelli to offer a few words to.
Thank you, Chief. Well, it's a real privilege for me to be here and celebrating Captain Baumann and his work in our community and in our fire department. And it's great to be able to celebrate this with you, not just because you're an amazing person and leader, you're a good friend of mine, and so it's a real privilege to be here today to say a few words. I've got a few things written down I didn't want to forget, so excuse me here, but I'll read through this and maybe offer a little color commentation as I go. Yes. Your spirited efforts toward doing good things for a community is very welcome. As a member of the fire department's leadership team, you provide input and insight to senior leadership and become the voice for many of the department's personnel. It was noted that over the past year, you've engaged many of us that sit and tend to city business from the dais in order to create the best working relationships that are possible. During the recent troublesome times the department faced, you were a leader in the department. It's never easy to speak about fire station brownouts or even possible closures. However, you offered solid input towards making the best out of a very troubling time. As a family man, I know a little something about that. As a family man, you balance the needs associated with work while taking care of your sons and working to raise them right. This in and by itself is a great accomplishment. For those of you here in the audience, I'd like to share some specifics of Dan's work. He's a respected company officer. He's an engine boss on the Prescott Wildland Team. He's competent EMT paramedic. He's a member of the Prescott Area Regional Hazmat Team. He's a member of the Prescott Regional Technical Rescue Team. He's the former chairperson of the Prescott Firefighters Charities from 2015 to 2017. He's a member of the Prescott Fire Department Honor Guard, and he's the president of the Prescott Chapter of the Local Firefighters Association. So I could go on and on about Captain Baumann. He's a great man. We're so privileged to have him on our department and in our community. And so congratulations to you, Captain Baumann.
Well, in lieu of me oversighting and forgetting some of the families that's here, maybe Dan, if you could introduce your family that's present, and perhaps, I think Megan's here as well, and those others, and those of us that were here, maybe you can introduce them, because fire is family.
Thank you. I want to first and foremost thank my beautiful Megan and our two boys and all my family that's here today. I'm lucky to have my mom, my dad, my stepmother, several of my aunts, good friends, and father-in-law. So thank you all for, you know, for supporting and understanding the amount of time that it takes to do this job. And thank you all. Thank you, Chief Light, for your leadership, guidance, and for creating the concept of this award. It really adds a lot to our organization and culture. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Mr. City Manager, for the time to do this today. Really, Prescott has a bright future right now. Happy to see how things are going. It's a really great honor to be nominated and, as Chief said, to be chosen by my peers. It really means a lot to me. It's, I honestly feel it could have gone to any one of the amazing men and women that I work with. We're all out there every day protecting lives and property of the citizens from fire and medical emergencies. And they're all extraordinary individuals. And, you know, thank you all for what you do, and thank you for this recognition. It really does mean a lot to me. And since I have this opportunity, I just want to take one brief moment to speak on behalf of all of our membership and to let you all know that, you know, we love our jobs as firefighters and what we do. And from myself and the rest of the department, we thank you for this opportunity to serve the citizens of this great city of Prescott. And thank you for this award, everybody.
Okay. Next presentation.
Item B, Water Smart Drop-by-Drop Education.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Leslie Grazer, Water Resource Manager, and I'd like to just identify Leah Hubbard, our Water Resource Coordinator as well, who's in the audience. She works halftime on water conservation topics, rebate program, as well as halftime on management. Today, the city briefly shares its new water education program, and we thank our colleagues and community members who have helped outline the 2018 monthly program. So first, we need to know what is Water Smart. Water Smart is a trademark that the city licensed in 2006 to brand its community water conservation education program. Since that time, through the rebate program, we've been able to track, the city has offered over $467,000 in rebates and acquired a savings of over 1,500 acre feet of water. This also includes K-12 education, and we'll touch on that a little bit more. On this slide, I do show an umbrella, and Water Smart really is the umbrella for a lot of other things. So there's Water Smart Landscaping, which is available on the website, Water Smart Rebates, for those who want to invest in either indoor or outdoor conservation measures. Public outreach is under that umbrella for when we go out into the community for Earth Day, April's Water Awareness Month, things of that nature. And so that brings us to this new education program. So it's called Water Smart Drop-by-Drop. Drop-by-Drop has, well, I guess with the umbrella overall, we are going to see a new logo come out called Water Smart. It's starting to roll out into the materials that you'll see out in the hallways and in other locations. So this water education program is an updated initiative that is an interactive series addressing water supply and conservation. It'll be on the third Wednesday of each month at noon, being housed at the library. We're very thankful for them. They have wonderful meeting spaces. It'll include a fact sheet for those who come and an opportunity to ask questions on that topic, or there might be some other things of interest at that time. Due with the support that we've had, I said of colleagues, John Heine has been one of those people, has helped us make sure we coordinate our newspaper, radio, social media, all those things that help get the message out into the public. This is the schedule for this drop-by-drop program, so it has monthly topics, as mentioned. And then April is the month that is April Water Awareness Month. So it's also supported with things in the library viewery. As I said, we'll be out at Earth Day. There is also the SciTech Fest, which is in science and education, that we bring elements of water into as well. This is almost my last slide. I can't say enough about how much we appreciate working for the U of A cooperative, or working with, I guess, the U of A Cooperative Extension. They have a 4-H and STEM coordinator. Her name is Stacy DeVoe. She has a master's in education, and she has the kits in town to deliver to K-12 or specifically by Arizona State Standards, fourth graders. And they include the water cycle, watershed, groundwater, and then a history lesson as well. So she can be contacted to bring those things into a teacher's classroom, give them a little bit of a break, which they probably definitely deserve some days, have somebody else come in, teach these four lessons when they, you know, have the opportunity to bring that into their classrooms. And this lady is just dynamic. She's wonderful. So we've tried to model some of our topics from these kits also into the adult, the young adult to adult learning range. So this is my last slide. This one did get missed. We look forward to seeing you there. Everything starts on January 17th of 2018 at noon. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact us, Water Resource Management, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. All right, let's move on to consent agendas. Any member want to pull any item from consent?
Yes, I would like to pull, if I can find it here, the item N for discussion and clarification.
So we'll pull item N, and at this point, I assume we'll take a motion on all but that one for the consent. And the consent should be up, yes, on the screen there for you. Yep.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 9A through 9M.
Second.
Of a motion and second vote, please.
Protem Orr.
Mayor, yes, I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilman Blair. Councilman Lamerson also needs your vote. Passes 7-0.
We'll get this down, figure it out.
You've only been here 16 years.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, I think we have defunct in the process here. Some of us did vote, it just didn't register.
All right, let's look at item N here and get some clarification.
Yeah, Mayor, when I saw this, I just wanted to find out. I actually asked Michael, I said, who proposed this? And I want to make sure that when we do these kind of studies, that they have a particular reason and that it's just not they came up to have another study. So Jesse, why don't you go ahead and relate to me what you related, or relate to the crowd what you related to me?
Of course. So this is for an economic impact study for the Prescott Municipal Airport. The benefits to having an economic impact study is really that it puts us on the offensive. The airport has been part of a strategic plan for the last two years. It's been a topic of conversation that we want to invest in our airport. The first reason why it would be a benefit is it lets you know what you're investing in and the purpose and what the return on your investment would be. It tells about jobs and revenue and really the economic impact to the entire community. The second reason is we're talking about regionalization of the airport. It's another reason this airport serves the region. And it's important to understand and know what that economic impact is, not only to the city of Prescott, but to the region as a whole. The third reason is that it helps leverage grant funding, specifically discretionary funding. This document will be used on an at-least annual basis in our conversations with the FAA and ADOT. It's something that other airports use regularly and use pretty successfully in order to get that discretionary funding. And to be honest, I want in on that. And so I think it puts us in on a more offensive base in order to help solidify that discretionary funding for Prescott Municipal Airport. And then also, we have an airpark that is underutilized, and I think having this report will demonstrate the importance of the airport in order to bring business into that airpark and say what the airport brings to businesses to get them here.
Thank you for the clarification.
Of course.
Councilman Blair.
Now, my clarification, you mentioned the word regional. And in the faith of our region, did you go to Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, or Yapai County to ask them to help fund this regional cooperation airport?
I did not.
Thank you.
Councilman, or Councilwoman Scholl.
Thank you, Mayor. How will the results of this study affect our airport master plan, if at all?
It won't really affect our airport master plan. That's basically what happens inside the fence. The economic impact study goes above and beyond what happens inside the fence. It's how it's connected to the community as a whole, both directly and indirectly, as far as jobs and revenue and what people spend in the community, what jobs are being brought here, specifically because of business that's being brought here. The airport master plan doesn't touch on that because it's talking about infrastructure and what we need to do infrastructure-wise for the airport.
Okay. Is there a chance that, say, we find something out from this study that would want, that we'd want to change our infrastructure at our airport?
I think it's possible in the fact of like a new terminal, things like that, that we currently are looking at and currently studying, and it's a topic of conversation. I think that we could see benefits specifically if we go to airlines and we use this document to solicit airlines and put us more on the offensive to get reliable air carrier service in here. I think we could see a connectivity between these two studies, but definitely utilize this data for other studies and to demonstrate what we're getting bang for our buck-wise as far as investment from the city of Prescott or possibly other regions if we pursue that route.
Okay. And then at a later time, we could amend our airport master plan if we found?
Oh, absolutely. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. We can always update the ALP.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you very much. Jesse, will the impact study take into consideration some of the implications regarding fire safety with Wildland Fire, number one? Number two, border implications with regards to some of the benefits, not only the community? Because when you start talking about a regional airport, a regional airport includes, when you bring in the aspects of border considerations, brings in the state of Arizona, brings in the federal government, brings in the purpose of the FAA to begin with. And then, number three, President Trump was very specific with regards to expanding the opportunities at rural airports.
Correct.
And we fit all of that with regards for national security. So if you want to take a moment to expand on that a little bit, or if you just want to say, oh, yeah, it gives us the ammunition in the gun belt to go to the feds and say, hey, guys, we're doing part of your job. We'd like some of the money back. We can go to the state and say, hey, guys, we're doing part of your job. We'd like some of the money back.
Correct. So the economic impact study is highly utilized for the state. Aeronautics Economic Impact Study, so some of that data will get pulled into the states, which does directly affect our funding. But you talked about the U.S. Forest Service. Those are other departments that have their fingers in other areas, not just the FAA, but the Department of Agriculture. So utilizing this study can provide leverage not only to airport staff, but elected officials in order to either get funding, refund amounts, and that kind of thing. So this study has a lot of different areas in which it can be applied strategically, depending on what the need is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Good.
Yes, I am glad to hear that this is going to be used to market our airport to additional airlines and providers. One of the things I want to make sure is that the leakage data is included, and I understand that to be defined as passengers potentially that would be using our current airport to travel to LA or Denver that are leaking by going down to Sky Harbor and using those flights there that we could capture, and that data is critical to show other airlines that those are passenger volumes that they could rely on to provide service here.
Right. We are looking for, looking to a leakage study specifically. When I say that we want to be on the offense specifically in regards to getting air carriers to come to the table, there's multiple ways and data points that they look to, and a leakage study is definitely part of that. It's not included in the economic impact study because it's more of a financial, it's done by largely a financial company that puts that together. However, that is definitely something that I am working on, along with Mr. Lamar, in order to facilitate that, and that should be coming to you shortly.
That's important.
Absolutely. I agree.
Any other questions, comments? Jesse? Thank you, Jesse.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 9 and?
Second.
The motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem Orr, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the regular agenda. 10A.
Appointment of Jared Nanki to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill an unexpired term through March 2020.
Okay. I was going to ask the selection committee if they had any background or comments they wanted to make in regard to this selection.
Well, I'll comment as part of that committee. We reviewed all the applications that were forwarded through to the selection committee, and based on those applications, this is the one we felt best qualified to fill that slot. And we are collectively making that recommendation of the council bodies' own.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Any public?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I move to approve Council Appointments Committee's recommendation to appoint Jared Nanki to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill an unexpired term through March 2020.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
And we are collectively making that recommendation of the council bodies' own.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Any public?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I move to approve Council Appointments Committee's recommendation to appoint Jared Nanki to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill an unexpired term through March 2020.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes seven zero.
Would he be in the audience by chance?
Is Jared Nanki, please come down.
At this point, City Clerk is gonna swear in Jared at this point, yeah.
So please hold up your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Jared Nanki.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nanki. Thanks for being here. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item B.
Adoption of Resolution Number 4415-1624 to revise the rules of procedure for city council meetings and rules of conduct at city meetings rescinding and replacing Resolution Number 4063-1133. And is please adopt resolution creating the rules of procedure for city council meetings and rules of conduct at city meetings and rescinding city of Prescott Resolution Number 4063-1133.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Palladini, do you want to give us some background on this?
Sure, Mayor and Council. The initial or the original rules of procedure, at least as far as we can tell, for the council were adopted in 2011. With the new, with the new elected mayor and the new council members, we went through the rules of procedure, and there, for the most part, what you see as being removed are practices or policy that the city councils just doesn't follow. We also did a lot of cleanup in, you know, there were just some confusing issues, so we just, we cleaned things up. We clarified, for instance, about placing items on an agenda to resolve any sort of disputes. I think the two issues of substance that will probably get some discussion are the time limit on public comment, as well as the speaker card item. But we provided you with both a clean version and what's a strike through or red line version showing all the changes to the policies and procedures. And so, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions about anything specific, but I think, again, the two maybe most noticeable changes will be regarding public comment.
Right, right. Well, I think with the speaker card, you know, I've talked a little bit about this, it's really for City Clerk to have a very good record of name, address.
It is. And it's a, in my experience, as well as the clerks, it's more, it's more common than it's not to have speaker cards. The county, Yapai County understands has speaker cards. The two cities I work for had speaker cards. I believe Goodyear had speaker cards. If you go to the state legislature and you want to speak at a committee, there's basically an electronic version of a speaker card to sign in. And I think the discussion is, it really sort of helps things, helps speakers, you know, sort of speak in an organized fashion. And I think, if you recall during the Deepwell Ranch discussions and public hearings, we sort of just ad hoc had a signup sheet. So it just avoided the crowd of people standing around. So it really becomes helpful when there's an item that has sort of a large group of public comment. And just sort of to just abuse anybody of any concerns about it, you know, the, if somebody knows they're gonna speak on an item, or a number of items, they can fill out the speaker cards in advance of the meeting. They certainly have the ability to fill out speaker cards, you know, during the meeting. And, you know, as we've done, as you've done already, if somebody has something to say, kind of spur of the moment, they can come up, you can let them come up and speak, and as long as they fill out the speaker card, sort of immediately following goes to the clerk, and then she can keep track of those speakers. So it's, it's really intended to be just a good, it's a good tool for the clerk. We, and just, so just as another matter, we can require a name and of a speaker, as well as the city in which they live. We ask for their home address. We're not, you're not required, a speaker isn't required to give a street address, but we ask for, again, just so for record-keeping purposes. But we do, we do require at least a name and a city, you know, whether you live in the city or outside the city, and that, but beyond that, we also are asking for, I think, a phone number. It's not mandatory, and that's just for if their clerk needs clarification. To the extent those cards are public records, we would redact out that personal identifying information, other than the name and the city in which they live. And so, you know, people shouldn't have a concern that, you know, to the extent that your name and your home address isn't already readily available from a number of sources, we would, we would redact that information out, but leave in just the name and the city in which the person resides.
Yeah, very good, thank you. I did notice during the Deepwell discussion that at times it was a little difficult for people to kind of get in line and all that, so I think the cards will kind of bring order to that, and with the clerk calling them up, it'll, it'll help with that discussion.
For the initial council study session, or after the initial county council study session, that's when we initiated the signup sheet, so it would kind of reduce that traffic jam of people. And that way, when people sign up, it just goes in order of when you sign up and when the cards come in, the clerk keeps them in order, so first come, first served.
Yeah. I also noticed in research, like you mentioned in the few cities you worked in previously, that generally the rule is nowadays that there is a speaker card of some form, and like you mentioned, the county does it, so, all right.
And just as another comment, it also allows someone on the card, if, you know, to, if they simply, if they want a comment written into the record, but they don't want to speak for some reason, there is some room on the card to write a comment, and then the clerk can read the comment into the record rather than that person. So, because sometimes people just don't want to publicly speak, but they want to have their comment into the record. So it actually, it's a tool for that as well. So, you know, we, talking with the clerk over, in sort of developing this, we highly recommend that that's a tool that the council should adopt and use for council meetings. And eventually, we'll probably implement it for some other commissions, particularly Planning and Zoning, which tends to have a, at times, a high speaker volume.
And certainly wouldn't require or obligate you to speak if you, you know, submitted one, you could always pull that.
They can waive, sure.
Sure, yeah. All right. Councilman Good.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, I think the card's probably a pretty good idea. I've attended many, many, many council meetings, and sometimes when there's a controversial issue, in the past, it all depended on who happened to be sitting closest to the front. So some of the people in the back never got a chance to speak, because the public comment period was eliminated. And I think, in this case, with those cards, I think more people will have a chance to address the council, so I think that's a good idea. Regarding the time, I personally think that restricting it to three minutes is too restrictive. There are times when people have a tendency to get off track and sometimes ramble, and that's unfortunate. But there are also times when you're dealing with pretty complex issues, and we have a number of very talented and experienced people that live in the city that can give us valuable input. And by arbitrarily restricting it to three minutes, I think we would miss out on that. So I'd like to see that period of time retained, and I just don't see it as a real problem. Occasionally, there's a big controversial issue where you get a lot of people in here that want to speak. That might be a little bit time-consuming, but it's not a problem for me. According to our city charter, in the previous rules, there was an opportunity for people in the public to bring non-agendized items forward. Does this rule change eliminate that?
You mean, well...
They can petition the city.
There is a, there is a, there's two, there's two, that's sort of two items. Bringing the public, according to the charter, can petition the council to vote on a specific question. But the vote, the petition, once the petition is received, it's thirty days, and, you know, there's thirty days in which the council has to agendize it and essentially vote on the item. In the five years I've been here, I think there have been maybe two of those. And the charter's rather vague in terms of what a petition means. Is it one person, is it, you know, there's no minimum number. So in theory, one person could, I guess, petition the council. It has to be a specific kind of legislative-type item that the council has authority over, obviously. I mean, I think we would avoid having petitions on foreign policy, for instance, or those types of issues. So the other issue is sort of a call to the public, which we don't do, and it's highly recommended to avoid under open meeting law issues. The Attorney General's Office recommends not having these sort of open, or calls to the public on items not on the agenda. The problem is, is it tends to prompt, or can tend to prompt a discussion of a non-agendized item. So we don't, we recommend that we don't have a call to the public. It's not part of, it's never been part of these procedural rules, and it's not part of the charter. And again, it's, the Attorney General recommends against it, as it's, there's a risk involved in terms of violating open meeting law. The best practice, I think, and I defer to the clerk as well, is the only things we talk about are things that are on, properly agendized on an agenda. And, you know, we have, we have our presentations, which obviously we saw two tonight, those can be items that the public can request to do a presentation. Again, the practice has always been, is it a matter of, you know, local or Prescott concern? And that just takes either two council people to sign it in to an agenda, or the mayor. And that's kind of been the practice, again, to, for people who want to make a presentation. And I think, I think those are maybe five minutes allowed as a presentation, I believe. But again, the formal presentations people make can, you know, I think they can arrange for a reasonable amount of time if it's a particularly complex issue, for instance. You know, they can ask for, some people ask for fifteen minutes, and they're suggested maybe do it in ten. And I will just say this about the three-minute rule, if it's adopted, is that the mayor is sort of the chairman of the meeting, can always exercise his discretion and expand the three minutes if it's a particularly complex issue, or if one speaker's representing a group, rather than having ten people come up and speak for two or three minutes each, the mayor can give sort of a representative a longer time. But the converse of, if it's a five-minute minimum, it's five minutes and you can't shorten it. So there is, you know, as a shorter time, so as the rule, there's always the ability to kind of expand or waive the rule, or create an exception to the rule on a particular issue.
Well, again, I think the council member should have at least the option of wanting to hear a little bit more information, and no disrespect to the mayor, but that gives you the authority solely to determine at what point extended time would be allowed. So that's an issue I have a problem with. I understand the open meeting law and call to the public, that wasn't particularly my concern, but to answer my question, does that petition option still exist?
Yes, it's part of the charter. And again, if a petition is delivered to the, it's usually delivered to the clerk, and then what happens is that item has to be agendized and debated and voted on within thirty days. And that, and then, and then again, that, part of that petition would be, would be on your, it would be on your normal voting agenda. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a presentation, because the petition would ask you to vote yes or no on something in particular, not sort of, it's not a petition for a presentation of information.
I understand it's rarely used, but I think it's important that the public know that they have a process for that. And I, for one, value public input, so I would vote to retain the five-minute limit.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Just a couple of points I'd like to make. I want to clarify that these new procedures aren't to prohibit or hinder the public from speaking, it's just to make it more orderly and more fair. I think it's a good point about folks who sit closer to the front can kind of jet and get to the microphone a little closer than those in the back. I can't and won't speak for the whole council, but personally, if we notice something isn't working, I'm willing to look at these procedures and adjust and tweak as we go, so that we can really make sure it's working for the council and for the public. So those are just two comments I wanted to add.
Good.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just being in radio, I'll tell you what, three minutes is a long time. And, you know, I was wondering, is three minutes an arbitrary figure, or did that come from some of the other cities that have these cards for speaking? And how did we come up with three minutes?
I will tell you, when I first got here and people are allowed five minutes, I was rather shocked, because I've never seen a five-minute speaker allowance. Again, unless a mayor or a chairman of, you know, Planning Commission grants somebody an extension of time. I know in, when I was in Sedona, it was two minutes, and then in Glendale, and I think Goodyear, three. The cities I've worked at, you know, worked on the private side usually give three, you know, two to, three is a really common timeframe or time limit for speakers.
One of the things that I've noticed is that some people almost feel like they have to use up the five minutes. And so, you know, I think that three minutes would be worth a try, and we can always revisit it.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the conversation. Like Councilman Good, I respect the public's opinion. I had no time sitting at the dais have I ever felt compelled not to say, well, hold on a minute, I want to hear the rest of the story. Every one of us that have been elected here have a right to stand up and say, well, hold on a minute, I'm not done listening. There may be something else the attorney in the back's got to say that's of interest to me. So I just, that's sort of where I'm at. I don't see any reason to change anything that we have. I'm comfortable with it. And just so you know, if somebody out there wants to talk longer than five minutes, and it's something that we feel is necessary, we can do that. We have that prerogative.
Mayor Pro Tem, are you still with us?
I am, and I do have some comments. First of all, may I like to say thank you and our attorney, Don Palladini, and clerk cut. So much of this needed to be cleaned up and tightened and made clear. The procedures had not been done for, I think, about six or seven, seven years, so I really appreciate the opportunity. I think three minutes is, if you can't say what you need to say in three minutes, then, you know, we've seen people ramble at the dais, and those that come up, they have their points ready. Three minutes, I think, is fine. I believe if I wanted to hear more as a councilperson, all I would need to say is, Mayor, could we give them another minute? And I believe we have to apply common sense here. And so I don't think we're gonna overthink this. The county does three minutes. I think we need to bring order to how we do this, and I believe it will work, and I'm with Councilwoman Scholl, I'd like to give it a try.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilman Blair.
I'm okay for a trial with three minutes, as long as we keep the people on the dais under the same scrutiny.
Let me just wrap up a couple more things before we go to public comment on the public comment. In my research as well, I found that two to three minutes was typically what was allowed for public comment. I have a good friend on the state medical board, and they allow three minutes. And so I agree kind of with what Mayor Pro Tem was saying, that I think, you know, if you're organized and well-thought-out... if you're organized and, and well-thought-out, you can get it done in three minutes. It's a long time on the radio, as Councilman Shishka mentioned. So, I think that's important to remember. I, I think, I appreciate Councilman Good and Councilman Lamerson's comments in regard to extending, that if someone is really on target and on point, and they're a professional in this particular field, and we can always extend three minutes, and, or ask, ask a question to allow them a little bit more time or clarification. So, I think we can do that to extend those that are, that are bringing us some very good information. This is not meant, as, as Councilwoman Shaw mentioned, this is not meant to inhibit public comment. As a matter of fact, if you think about it, if we can get through a meeting quicker, some people want to stay for the last couple of agenda items, but they're here for maybe two hours, and it's a difficulty, and they don't know exactly when we're going to get to that agenda item. So, if we can move through an agenda, they can hopefully be here to stay for that particular agenda item. So, it can, kind of, there's a flip side to this, if we can get through a meeting to get to those later agenda items. So, Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you. Maybe I didn't clarify my comment as well as I wanted to. In fact, the matter is, I don't care if it's one minute, two minutes, three minutes, five minutes, it doesn't matter. Like Billy was saying, anytime, any one of the seven of us want to say, "Hold on a minute, I want to hear more about this," we can do that. So, it doesn't matter whether you set it at three.
I assume we have some speakers?
Yes, we have four speakers. First one is Daniel Mattson.
Good afternoon. I guess you know I'm Daniel Mattson. I live over on Merritt Street. One of my major concerns was addressed by John, in that he had suggested that if somebody at the last moment comes up with a desire, that we could be allowed, understanding that we hand a card to him. Because sometimes, I'll be sitting there, and I don't plan on speaking about something, but something's brought up at the last moment, or one of the speakers ahead of me says something that I just feel needs to be commented on. And that was one of my main, probably my primary concern about this, was the, the lack of ability for one of us regulars, who pays attention and gives you input, to come up here and say, "Hey, you know, this is an issue." I think the three-minute limit is good, because it's going to help move things along, and as several of you have said, longer can be allowed. The procedure for putting something on the agenda, I'm sure there are some here who recall, you know, I've been coming here for like eight years. Several years back, we had somebody apply to put on the agenda before the form required two councilmembers approving it, and we had someone come and put on the agenda something about smart meters, and we literally had a bunch of people marching here with foil hats, I kid you not. Do you remember that, Steve? I'm not joking. Foil hats to talk about smart meters, which this council has no effect on at all, and they were allowed to carry on for a considerable amount of time. That never should have gotten on the agenda. And one other thing I would like to suggest, Greg, you fairly knew at this, I do watch many a time when someone will get so far off track. And the three minutes is going to make it a lot easier to cut somebody off when they're way off topic. So, having heard that you can consider letting someone come up at the last minute and hand you a card afterward, I withdraw my objection, and it sounds like something good to try.
Thank you, Daniel.
Sandra Smith.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Guess you know I'm Sandra Smith. I'm at 701 White's Bar. My objection, and this is as a conservative, okay, is multiple pieces of paper for every topic. If I put in a form to speak on a particular topic, and something comes up later, she's already got all the information, except the number of the item, why repeat? Why keep wasting trees? Can't some of us that come regularly just put in one card, and then if we need to speak, speak? And if we don't need to speak, we don't have to say anything? Is that a possibility?
We can take a look at that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Hoy.
Leslie Hoy, 1880 Coyote Road. I have an organized talk, but it's going to be hard to stick to it, so maybe somebody could give me the one-minute-left sign. This topic is so important to me, it's important to the core of my being. My relatives came here from Russia, where public comment was not allowed. It's the, it's so important to our democracy, so I'm going to go back to my speech now. Since last week, I did a lot of research on this topic. I talked to a lot of people over the week. I'd say that most of the people who had lived in the valley and had used these comment forms in the valley, they were fine with that. However, all but one person I talked to felt that this would discourage people from speaking to the council. A friend of mine who had surgery and couldn't come today said, "Remind the council that they are public servants, not the other way around." So, you're here to serve us. If someone comes and they feel strongly about an item, and they're not an experienced public speaker, and they're not a professional, I feel it's your job, as some of you have indicated today, thank you, to listen to that person. It's not going to kill you, you know, to give them an extra minute and be patient with the fact that they're not organized. They, they took the time to come here, and a lot of times, it takes guts. When I first started speaking at council, I was so nervous every time. I'm still a little bit nervous today, but not like I was in the beginning. So, I would urge you to be patient with the people that come, and perhaps not institute these rules quite so quickly without trying them out. If you do use this form, and you do intend it for people to submit comments, because they don't want to come to the dais, the form should be revised so that it indicates that. I read it all over, there's no place that says "comment" on this form. One thing that Mr. Palladini didn't mention, I read all the edits, and I read all the clean copy. And one thing that is being eliminated is the ability for citizens to request five minutes out of study session. That part is all crossed out. Not that many people have used it over the years, but some people have used it, and you should know what you're eliminating if you're voting for these rules today. As Councilwoman Shaw said, maybe we should try this out first, before we write it in stone, and I agree with that. Also, the question of not being able to address staff, I think that's already always been a rule. Yes, it got loosey-goosey now and then, and I'm, I admit to being a person guilty of sometimes looking at staff and speaking to them. However, one thing happened last week. A lady came and she talked about, she wanted to, she had a question about lot splits, and nobody answered her question. She wasn't allowed to be addressed by staff, and she happened to come up to me out in the hall after the meeting, and she was very upset. I don't know if she'd ever been here before, but she felt really let down. So, I think it's really important, if a citizen comes with a question, and you don't want staff to answer that question for some reason or other right now, that it's important to say to that person, you know, "Here's how you get your question answered," or "Your phone number's on the form, someone will contact you."
You have about one minute, Leslie.
Okay, good. I've come for six mayors, including you, the new mayor, Mangrilli. Very seldom has a citizen or councilman behaved badly. If you've watched the Prescott Valley Council meetings, you'll see that often there's not a single person in the audience. Public, I can't see over the microphone. Public participation is what keeps Prescott citizens engaged and active in the governance of our community to this extent that they are, and one would hope that they would become more engaged and active in our community. We should encourage greater participation, not less. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Ralph Hess.
I agree with everything Leslie Hoy just said, so I won't repeat it. And I agree with what Councilman Phil Good said, so I won't repeat that. But I will address Rule 10. I encourage you to keep the five-minute rule. I've been to a number of these meetings over a number of years. Very often, the speaker does not use the exhaust the entire five minutes, and the people who do use the five minutes usually are providing information that I find to be informative and beneficial for the council to hear. Another thing that concerns me is, you still have the rule, or the practice, of presenting an issue for the first time when you're voting on it. So, often, in the past, it used to be that you'd have a study session with the same agenda items that were going to later be addressed on the voting session. And so, public had an opportunity to come to the study session and provide input that the council considered between the time of the study session and the time of the voting session. You don't do that anymore. So, what you now have is council addressing agenda items, and the first time the council, or the public get to comment on it is on the day that you're voting on it. And so, frankly, I'm, I'm concerned that often councilmembers come in already knowing how they're going to vote, and whether you have five minutes or three minutes of comment from each of the public members, that's not going to have any impact on how you've already decided you're going to vote anyway. So, the one thing I will repeat that I, I was going to state, that Leslie stated, is I, I hope that you would encourage more participation from the public, not less. And the five minutes is not going to be burdensome on the timeframe to allow people to fulfill their complete comment before, before you vote on it. The other item that I wanted to address was Rule 2, and I didn't bring my copy with me, but if I recall correctly, the very last phrase of Rule 2 indicates that councilmembers may not use their position on the council to influence an award of a contract to family members, friends, or somebody else.
Business associates.
Business associates. Thank you. My question is, why would you want to limit it to those three classes of people? Who are the people within, who are the people that you do want councilmembers to be able to use their position on the council to influence the award of contracts? It sounds to me like the council should never, ever be able to use their position on council to influence the award to a particular person for a contract. You go through the RFP process, you go through, and if it doesn't, if it's small enough that it doesn't have to go through the RFP process, why would you want to have someone get an advantage because of influence that's imposed by one of the councilmembers? Put a period after, before the list of classes of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speaker cards.
Anybody else? Maybe that didn't fill out a form? Okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, one other comment. This relates to Mr. Palladini was saying, and something what Leslie had stated, is, is in amending the, the form, I noted after I got here late and turned in my form, that it says that, had to present the form to the clerk before the meeting begins. So, you might want to change that to, before the agenda item is completed, or...
Yeah, point well taken. We'll make sure it reflects what we're saying up here. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Shaw.
I just have a follow-up question. Mr. Palladini, if we go ahead and approve these changes, there's nothing that keeps us in one month, two months, three months from changing them again, correct?
That's correct. And, and without adopting these changes to the rules, the old rules remain in place. So, there's no, you know, you can't sort of experiment, say, with the three-minute rule and speaker cards unless you change the rules. But certainly, this council, or any subsequent council, can adopt different rules, new rules, change the rules back to the old rules, as, as it sees fit, once it gives it the, you know, appropriate time, you know, to see how, how well it works for y'all. I mean, and I, you know, in other kind of my experience, and I'll defer to these two as well, I think sometimes, you know, with the two and three-minute rules that most, most governments that I've had experience with, it actually allows for more people to speak within kind of a limited timeframe. And as you recall from the Deepwell Ranch discussions, the mayor at that time sort of had to say, "We're at, you know, we're at 3:00, we got to stop the meeting," or "At 5:00, we got to stop the meeting." And there were still maybe people out there who, you know, wanted to speak. So, you know, the, the sort of encouraging more participation for more people, in my experience, really, has been that a three-minute timeframe actually kind of allows more people to fit into sometimes a limited time, particularly if you're going to do it at a study session, where you kind of have a hard cutoff at, you know, at, at 3:00. So, that's just my background in it.
Thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you. I guess my question is, what is so magical about five minutes? Why not six minutes? Why not seven minutes? You know, I, I truly do think that, that we have put in place the opportunity for people to continue their conversation, particularly at the behest of a councilmember, but certainly they could ask for more time, and, you know, it would certainly be up to the body that's listening to say, "Yeah, we want to hear more." You know, I, I think that, that we ought to try the three minutes and see how that works out. If it doesn't work out, we always have the opportunity to amend it.
Thank you. Good discussion. Mayor Pro-Tim.
Yes. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to agree with Don Palladini. I think this gives more opportunity for more people to speak, and, you know, I'd like to hear from seven people at three minutes, rather than two people at five minutes. So, I think it's really important that, that we bring that up, and just by no means does this limit public input. In fact, I think it increases. And as far as the study session, that's really up to your prerogative, and I'm sure you will be listening to councilmembers if they want to hear from the public. We want public input, so I believe, again, common sense on this, and I, and I am all in support of the three minutes.
Thank you. Well, let me add, there are other ways to get your comments to council. So, email is a great way to do this, where you could email council ahead of time, if you felt like that was going to be more influential, is to have those written comments, and those get sent to every councilmember, and so I think that is a good way. You can also set an appointment with a councilmember, if you'd like to do that. So, there's, other than just the time here, there are other ways to get to the council. So, any other questions, comments from council?
I'll just throw in a quick, quick, quick jab there, Mayor. At no point in this conversation did anybody up in this day say that somebody's going to be shut off. I didn't what was said. So, the public is more than welcome to address this council at any time.
Agreed. Yeah, and we want to make sure, as we introduce this concept and make sure the form reflects this, that at any time during the meeting, you could fill that out, even retroactively after you speak. So, we'll make sure that that's all congruent. I'd entertain a motion now, if there's no other comment.
May I move to rescind City Prescott Resolution Number 4063-1133 in its entirety and adopt Resolution Number 4415-1624?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Mayor Pro-Tim, what is your vote?
Yes.
Pass is 7-0.
Okay, thank you.
I voted no.
Did you?
It said yes up there.
Well, I pushed the no button.
Okay, so pass 6-1.
Your yes, Phil.
So, change that to 6-1. Thank you, Councilman Good. All right, we'll move on to item Agenda C.
Approval of Agreement for Potable Water with WD Properties LLC for a 21-unit apartment project at 620 First Street. project at 620 First Street.
This project is located west of Montezuma Street at the intersection of Navajo and First. As described in your packet, it's for a 21-unit apartment complex that's seeking 2.23 acre feet of alternative water. This project was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission and received recommendation, as well as it was heard by the Water Issues Committee and received recommendations. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments from council?
Good infill project.
Yeah, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission and reviewed this thoroughly, and I think it's a good infill project as well.
Okay. Entertain a motion. There's no other discussion.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
The Water Issues Committee wanted to pass this on to the council. But the weight factor was, is it a public advantage to have this, you know, what is the public advantage to have the apartment complex? And so, you know, is that what we're considering today?
Your recommendation, or your recommended action is, for the purposes of alternative water allocation, council considers whether the proposed apartment project will provide a particular community benefit, if in the affirmative move to approve the contract. So, you're asking, this project did come in twice to the committee, the Water Issues Committee, and it was coming in at the same time that we were working on changing unit allocation. It came, that was in May. It came back again, and it was heard a second time. And it's important to remember that this is within the 2017 policy timeframe still, even though we've adopted one, a new one for next year already. But the 17 policy does say that the council may consider other apartment projects and approve an allocation of alternative water if available for each such other project upon a finding of particular community benefit. And I think that's what you're asking.
So, am I hearing that the community benefit, particular community benefit is a good infill project? Is that what I've heard from a couple of council people?
I would leave that to the elected officials to decide if they agreed with the letter that was received from the applicant.
And providing lower-cost housing.
This is for US vets?
No, sir. This is a 21-unit that is independent, and it's not related to US vets or any other assistance program.
Other questions, comments? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2018-12.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Mayor Pro Temore, what is your vote?
Yes.
Passes 6-1. Passes 7, passes 7-0.
Okay. Let's move on to Agenda Item D.
Award city contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the reconstruction of the Rossar Street Phase 4 project and to amend city contract with Plateau Engineering for post-design services for the Rossar Street Reconstruction Phase 4 project.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Steve Oros in Public Works, and we're here to discuss the Rossar Street Reconstruction Project. One minor housekeeping item, the, if you move forward with this, the city contract that we're amending for the post-design services is 2014-168A, as in Apple II. This project is the fourth phase, and the last phase of the reconstruction of Rossar Street between Willow Creek Road and 89. This section is for Campbell, for about, just over a mile to the east, through the area that's well-known for the traffic calming elements in there. The item here has got two parts. One, the first part is for the post-design services with the engineering firm to complete the bid assistance, working with the contractor, preparing the record drawings, the post-construction surveying, and the like. And the construction contract is for the actual physical work on the project, which was put out to public bid using the hard bid or low bid process. The bid came in at just over 2.5 million. The engineer's estimate was about 3.1 million. We had three qualified bidders, and the confirmation of bid and the past performance on projects has been verified, and we are recommending approval of these two contracts. Should the council award this today, the pre-construction meeting will happen after the first of the year with shovels in the ground in February. And the project is scheduled to be constructed this fiscal year. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Councilman Blair?
You mentioned it, so I will stay on it. Those traffic calmer's, are they in the project as coming out?
There is one element of the traffic calming that is coming out, and that is the median that's between the left turn lane and the through lane in the same direction. That seems to be the one that has been damaged the most over time and is not as needed as some of the other traffic calming elements.
Well, I'm not here to slow down a great road project, but I will tell you, those were put in in 2008 for a very few squawkers in this community at a very high price. And Rossar Street was designed in its originality to be an east-west mover and not an east-west choker. So, I don't support these damn things out there playing pinball in the first place. So, I would have liked to have seen an addendum to that of what it would cost to remove all of them and make that a street that moves traffic instead of slowing traffic. And also, that's just a personal complaint of mine, because I think it was done in the wrong vision anyway, in the first place. Second of all, we're wanting to talk about an after-the-project award. I'm not sure I've ever seen this before, to where we have an engineering group come in after the fact and design the as-bilts. I always thought the City of Prescott did that upfront.
Okay. Let me, good questions. Thanks for the request for clarifications. Let me address the post-design contract comment first. What we've been seeing in the past couple of years is that the post-design contracts, when they're, or portions of work that are scoped out and the costs are provided, at the same time as the project is initiated, when we haven't finished all the design plans, we haven't completed, but the actual scope of the project is in detail. We've been having some of the consultants having concerns about the post-design project budget being too small. The project grew for some reason. We had six more sheets of plans due to some element of the project growing during the design, and they had budgeted six fewer sheets. So, we were dealing with amendments and budget allocation issues. So, what we've been doing in the past, say, six months to a year, is that we've been separating out the post-design to be awarded concurrently with the construction, so we know exactly what the project is. We can have a better price from the consultants. They don't have to guess, is it going to be this much or this much? They know how many sheets there are, they know the scope of work, and we can get a very good competitive price from the consultant. And in this case, Plateau was the original design consultant for the project.
So, I would say to the community that, and years later on, that we have a finished set of as-bilts in the end.
Correct. Yes.
And that's what we've been lacking for a long time, in a lot of different ways.
Yes. We did go through a period where that process wasn't working, and we've pulled that to where the design consultant that we've hired to do the initial work is the one responsible, under contract, to provide us with the record drawings that we need for our records.
I think it's valuable, and I'm glad to see you're doing that.
Thank you.
I'll go back to the first one.
Thought we could devoid. The, I can't speak to how they were put in or when they were put in, because I wasn't here. Our traffic engineer, Ian Mattingly, has been reviewing this, and it has been a topic of conversation during the public meetings we had on the project. If it's the will of the council, we can make minor modifications to remove them. However, they did serve a purpose. The speeds in there have slowed down to about the 25, 30 miles an hour that have, which is what they were, everything was designed for. So, I would defer more to the traffic engineer, who is not here right now to speak to those nuances. However, a wider street, as Rossar is, without some of those traffic calming elements, when you have residential properties fronting them, can be problematic. And I can see, in retrospect, based on my experience in other municipalities, that a wide residential street typically has a lot of speed complaints from the residents that live on the street, because the cars that are zooming past them have concerns for them.
You know, we did that study on Sequoia of people speeding, and 90 percentile were the neighbors speeding in their own neighborhood.
That is very common.
I just want to share that with you.
Sure.
And even though I appreciate your comment, and even though I know it's going to cost money, I just think the city, in its time, did a poor job of allowing development to front Rossar Street, to have the ingress egress, knowing it was going to be, and it was designed 27 years ago, when it was Brown's Lane, to be an east-west connector. And we really screwed that up. So, in my opinion, they should go away, but I understand, in today's world, the necessity of them. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments?
Entertain a motion. Mr. Blair?
I'm not sure I can find it after all that. Award to city contract number 2018-113 to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated. By the way, they're doing a great job out on the highway for the reconstruction of Rossar Street, award a Phase 4 project in the amount of $2,522, 22, 22, 2. Wow. And also, a contract, did you say that number changed?
Yes.
Could you repeat that number?
The amendment is city contract number 2014-168A2.
Thank you. With Plateau Engineering and Post Design Services for Rossar Street Reconstruction Phase 4 Project in the amount of $34,601.
We have a motion and second. City Clerk, do we have any public comment? I apologize.
No, Mayor.
I'm new at this, so, thank you. Any public comment out there that anybody has at this point? Okay. And I didn't know if somebody wanted to jump in with Councilman Blair on the traffic calmer's. Motion and second. Oh, I'm sorry, Sandy, do you have something?
Mayor, council, I would just like to say that this is a project that the Bike Ped Committee discussed at great extent, and part of the reason for those traffic calming things was to protect bicycle riders on that road. The bicycle lane is inside the calmer's, not outside it. So, that kind of keeps the cars and the bikes apart.
I see.
Now, that, this was something we discussed with Ian in the meetings, so I just thought I'd bring that up for you.
Yes.
So, they're safe on part of Rossar, and then they're not on the other part?
Well, the uphill side is just a straight bike lane, but the downhill side, where they're going a lot faster, and cars are going a little faster too, generally, just that gravity thing, you know, that does provide them a little additional protection there. So, that was part of the reason that those were put in there apparently initially, but that is something that we talked about when they were talking about redoing this whole project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Pro Tem, did you have something?
No, I don't. Just ready to vote whenever we have it done.
Okay. Any other public comment? We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Mayor Pro Temore, what is your vote?
My vote is yes.
Passes 7-0.
I'm off because I have to go to the doctor right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Good luck, Billy.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to Agenda Item E.
Approval of City Contract with Shepherd Wetsnitzer Incorporated for Design and Engineering Services for the FY19 Small Water Mains Mile High Park and FY20 Small Water Mains Juniper Vista.
Thank you. Steve Oros still. This item is part of our Small Water Mains Improvement Program. It's an ongoing program to improve water service quality and reliability for areas that have historically small water mains. We have several water mains in the city that are smaller than our current standard of 6-inch, so this is the program that's improving the water lines. The two items before you today are for setting up construction projects in next fiscal year and the following fiscal year. The first project area is in the Mile High area. The, some of the water mains in that area, and... that are being upgraded are along Mayo, Keene, Mile High, and Rose Garden. Those areas have been identified as having the small water mains and a substantial maintenance history that we would like to improve. And then, the second area is in the Hazley area. The, there are some water mains that are in the area that we serve in the county along Juniper and Karen that are being upgraded, as well as on Senator Highway, or Senator Road here. The second project includes abandonment of a small water tank that's in the area, and with this improvement, we can remove that one tank, which is a good thing to, for our maintenance aspects. The reason why the two projects are here today at the same time is that the, this project here, the Juniper Vista area, is going to take a little longer to design before we can get to construction. So, to get the project ready to deliver in FY20, we need to get the design started at this point in time. The consultant, Shepherd Wetsnitzer, was selected from our on-call professional services list, and the contracts here are for two separate projects and two separate amounts. The first project is about 2,800 lineal feet of water line being designed and constructed. The second project is just over 5,000 lineal feet. The total amount of the construction and design for the Area 1 project is roughly $2.4 million at this point, and the Area 2, this one here that's on the screen right now, is just over $3 million. So, that's the total project estimates, design and construction. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Councilman Blair?
Thank you. The one here up on Juniper that serves some of the areas in the county, just out of curiosity, when they design that, knowing that it's in the firewise area, because it's in the forest and it's on the footsteps of coming into Prescott, do they add in more fire hydrants in that area when they design, you know, new water lines? Because they're going from a 2-inch to a 6 to an 8-inch, so therefore, the flows have got to be better.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it would make sense that it being on the edge of town, that there may be more fire hydrants up there, or is that...
That would be something that we could look at during the design of the project and working with the county and the fire departments to evaluate. And Mr. Water here, I think, is behind me.
You are correct. Currently, in both of these areas, there is no fire protection from our water system. So, both of these improvements will bring into place fire hydrants on our standard placement of 500 feet to improve or enhance the area with the fire protection.
I appreciate that, and I'm sure that the people that live in the area would appreciate it as well. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this one? Anything from the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay, seen none. We'll entertain a motion.
May I move to approve city contract number 2018-117 and 2018-118?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Okay, and now, Agenda Item F.
Approval of a Professional Service Agreement with Lion Engineering to provide engineering services for the Sundog Grants Road Water Line Upsizing Project.
Hello again. Do I need to fill out a blue card? Do I need to fill out a blue card? This project before you is another water enhancement project. This one has multiple needs for it. Besides of the size of the pipe, it's part of a water service agreement to improve water service in the area for the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe area, as well as the Storm Ranch Development Area near the transfer station. The design contract, this is again just the preliminary design preparation for the bid documents, is, was, Lion Engineering was selected for this because of their prior experience on some of the Sun Dog trunk main alignments. Early on in the trunk main design, it was anticipated that the sewer trunk main was going to go through this area. However, through various centralization processes, the alignment was moved out to Highway 89. So they had some preliminary information survey, some background. So from the on-call list, they were also selected to work with the staff to come up with a scope and fee for design services. The the design is about six months to be completed, and then we would go to construction. The roadway in this area does need to be replaced. However, the funding is not available currently from the road fund, so we're going to be taking the complete project design to about 30%, and then moving forward with the waterline construction, anticipating that at some future time, the road would be replaced when funding allows. And with that, oh, the total project cost for the waterline portion of the project's about 2.2 million.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Any questions?
Did you hit the button there, Councilman Blair? No? Oh, Councilman Good, go ahead.
I noticed in the memo, we're talking about the project will also provide needed capacity for the Storm Ranch Development.
Yes.
This is a situation where we're providing public utilities to the benefit of a developer, at least to a percentage, where we're not being able to provide any or require any development impact fees for that developer's benefit. So the question is, how important is this to be done now? And would it be appropriate to delay it until this developer begins developing, and then we can charge some of the cost off?
The driver on this project is for us as the city to meet our obligations within the water service agreement with Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe, as well as our water infrastructure settlement agreement, is the driver. As far as the Storm Ranch subdivision, they are a subsidiary beneficiary of us needing to do this project to meet our current obligations that we have from those other agreements.
So you're saying it's important to do it now because of those obligations?
That's correct. That's correct.
But once they're put in, we can't charge the developer after the fact?
With, good comment, Councilman. The Storm Ranch Development has a current development agreement that was developed several years ago, so there's not an ability to go back on that agreement. The Storm Ranch Development is moving forward currently. We have, as Public Works, reviewed and permitted the access road coming up from the roundabout on Prescott Lakes Parkway up to the development. We're currently reviewing the final plat and the improvement plans for the development of the subdivision, so it is moving forward as we speak.
So we're kind of obligated based upon the previous plat approval?
Correct. And also, as Craig mentioned, is that the primary driver for this waterline upsizing is our water service agreement with the tribe.
Well, I appreciate a primary obligation. I just wanted to make sure a secondary obligation might have some chance to get public taxpayers' dollars used more effectively.
Thank you.
Mr. Palladini?
Sir?
Had we known that we had the ability to do what Mr. Good is suggesting prior to entering into a development agreement, would we have had the opportunity to have them pay for a portion of that upsizing?
Yes, on a couple accounts. One, we could have done it by development agreement where the developer would have paid its, you know, some sort of pro-rata share. The, there is, you know, had this been part of our current development impact fee study, a portion could have been allocated to that development where even if the city does the construction up, you know, before the development starts, we can recoup money under development impact fees after the fact. The rule is, once we collect the fee, we have to build whatever improvement the fee's paying for within 10 years or refund it, but we can build it upfront, and then, and then as the project comes online, be recouped for the cost, or at least a proportionate share of the cost of the project. It's not, it's not in our current, I'm looking over at Mark, is it in our current rate?
I mean, we're, sorry, we're definitely getting into the study, the new study coming up in this next year. It could be in the current study, we're reviewing it now, but there's a ton of projects. There are several Sun Dog projects. So if it is part of the original IIP that the rates were based on, we will be collecting reimbursement from the subdivision when they buy in.
Quite frankly, that was one of the specific issues that I brought up with our legislative advocate, Barry Erns, because sometimes this 10-year restriction is difficult to get these things designed, implemented, built, and charged back in that amount of time. Infrastructure doesn't happen quickly.
But if we, in this case, if we were to build the infrastructure first, before the project starts building, pulling building permits, we have an unlimited time to collect on those building permit impact fees as they come in. And the question here is, you know, whether it's, you know, 5% of the cost, or 3% or 10%, you know, there is still that ability to get a development, to pay a pro-rata share of whatever it, whatever demand it's creating, even after the fact. And in that fact, I think that's probably more common than not. We, we'll, we do the infrastructure oftentimes, and then, and then we'll collect impact fees to reimburse for that cost with the infrastructure already being built. So it's not, it's a pretty common practice here and in most
Let's do it.
Well, and that is what we do a lot with water and wastewater, because that infrastructure needs to be in upfront. So that's less of an issue than it is with the police and fire aspects of impact fees. And just to clarify, water and wastewater projects, you have 15 years. It is bigger than the 10-year.
And we can certainly look and see whether it's in the current IIP, and as Mark said, come the first of the year, around the first year, we're going to be redoing the IIP for new, for, you know, going forward, so it, maybe it's Could it be added as an addendum to the going forward?
Well, it'll be part of the new study. Which will be, I mean, will be put together within the next year, which will probably be before development start.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Any public?
I don't have any speaker cards.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2018-119.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Okay, before we adjourn, I'd like to read a quote from Ronald, President Ronald Reagan. "We believe faith and freedom must be our guiding stars, for they show us truth, they make us brave, give us hope, and leave us wiser than we were. Merry Christmas, everyone, have a great New Year, and Happy Holidays." This meeting's adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And thank you for the Merry Christmas.